Meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Claire Maxwell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. I'd like to invite everybody to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. Approval of the agenda. Number four. Any questions, comments, members of the board? If there are not, we will entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Breton.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Excuse me. Any members of the board have questions, comments, or concerns? If there are none, we will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right. Recognition of the Blackman Middle School girls state basketball champions. Is the coach here? You want to come up and hear it?
Hi, I'm Coach Churell. First, I want to thank you guys for inviting us to the meeting and recognizing us as a team, as state champions. These girls have worked hard all season, even when things weren't always going our way. They worked hard. Their commitment, dedication, and their commitment to the team was prevalent all throughout the season. And so I'm extremely proud of them and thank you guys for having us.
Have them. You want to have them too. Get out of the picture.
Yeah. Let me sit down.
Oh, great. Thank you, yes.
James, you're going to get picked.
Yep. Wonderful. Congratulations.
Girls, Mr. Evans is going to get a picture made of you right out in the atrium there. No doubt. Looks like a high school team.
I thought they were.
Huge.
Look at it in their middle. Okay. We'll move on to visitors. We have one visitor this evening. Frances Rosales.
Hello. I'm going to try not to talk fast since I don't have a big thing to talk. So I like a big agenda. So I want to say that I'm glad to see on the agenda that you're reviewing the salaries for the nurses. Just want to say that my mother was a nurse back in 1980. She lasted in the school system only one year. And the reason is because of the amount of work that she had to do as a nurse. My mom was an acute care nurse and she had to work with special needs children. There's a lot of work that these nurses have to do that is more than just applying a Band-Aid, giving them a medication. They are required to have specific critical care experience. So I'm in favor that we look and reexamine the salaries for the nurses. I understand that there was a restructure, but that restructure also happened to cut the pay of new hires. So I hope that if there's funding to evaluate it and get the nurses the pay that they do deserve because they do work really, really hard. And second of all, I want to talk again, one more time about the timeline and hiring a new hire for the superintendent. There were things that happened in 2018 that were not discussed in the meetings when they were talking about the superintendent, particularly with the background checks that were excluded back in 2018. And it was in an article at the time with TSBA that said the board did not elect to pay the extra $2,000 to $3,000. And it also acknowledged that the TSBA did do a really good job of verifying past employment, verification of some of the applicants. So I implore on the board to look at this process and make sure that we're not leaving things out that are non-negotiable. I look at this position as a CEO of a corporation and it behooves us that we find the best applicant for this job. And there's a whole number of other reasons that I can continue, but looking at this process, I implore that you guys look at it and make sure that we do it as due diligence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right. Review of nurses' salaries and labor issues. Ms. Winters.
Hi there. I'm going to try to speak at a level tone here. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking this time to review and consider the Rutherford County Schools' nurse salaries. I recognize that there are many, many issues with which this board must deal and this is just a small portion of that. I have been with Rutherford County Schools since August of 2002, so I am wrapping up my 21st year with the district. Up until this past July, school nurses were paid on a teacher's salary scale, making equivalent salary based on education and years of experience. Nurses' salaries topped out at 15 years of experience until just a few years ago when our top out was increased to 16 years. At that time, we were told that we would move up to the 21-year top out within a few years, but that didn't happen. A little over a year ago, I was invited to a meeting with the Director of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance to review the health services budget for the coming year. In that meeting, I was told that the best, most fiscally responsible option for Rutherford County Schools was to outsource nursing services, meaning that we would contract with an agency for nurses to provide the care required for our students. It was stated that paying nurses the same as teachers was unsustainable. I voiced an understanding of the financial situation we were faced with, but asked for time to create a staffing plan that would allow Rutherford County Schools to retain control over the hiring, the training, and supervision of the nurses. Over the following weeks, we did adjust the plan. First, we moved to a plan that would include hiring more LPNs. Now, an LPN is a practical nurse who is licensed to complete tasks under the supervision of a registered nurse. A registered nurse has additional training and has at least an associate degree. It's sort of like the difference between an EA and a teacher. The EA can implement a lesson plan as long as a licensed educator has developed it. In the same vein, an LPN can implement a plan of care for a student as long as an RN or an MD has developed that plan of care. So for this staffing plan, it would suggest that we hire LPNs as we lost RNs through natural attrition. After discussing the practicalities and problems that would accompany this type of model, we began to explore a model that went back to hiring RNs, but paying them an hourly wage. This plan was also not ideal because we would essentially be asking current salaried nurses and future hourly nurses to perform the same job, which often includes working long hours. The salaried nurses would be expected to stay until the job was done, while the hourly nurses would probably want to finish the job and do the work, but wouldn't be allowed to due to the overtime it would create. From there, it was proposed that we keep all nurses on a salary, but we use a new scale for newly hired nurses, one that was comparable to that used in various other Tennessee counties. So from where we had begun, which was outsourcing nursing altogether, to that modified salary, despite it being quite low, in my opinion, I felt we had come quite a long way and I was willing to give it a try. I worried that we would have trouble filling vacancies, but felt that we had made huge strides in just a few weeks. It was repeatedly stressed that no current salaries would see a drop in pay. And while we all understood that, it still felt like nurses' value was being diminished by dropping the pay for new staff and the overall morale of the department dipped significantly. As the 21-22 school year began and COVID made a raging comeback, we had several seasoned registered nurses leave Rutherford County Schools. And despite having experienced PRN nurses who had been waiting for a full-time position to open, we couldn't fill these positions from within. So let me just explain PRN nurses. We hire, train, and support our own subpool. So there's no advantage subfinder for nurses. When we have callouts or nurses are out on maternity leave or they're out after surgery, we staff those holes with our own float nurses and our PRN nurses. And if we have to, we pull a nurse from a lower acuity school to help out or a clinical charge nurse will step in whenever they're necessary. So when none of our PRNs wanted to go full-time under the new salary, we had to hire nurses from without, outside. Nurses who were not familiar with the specialty field of school health, straight into these full-time positions. And that's hard. It's just really hard. There's always a learning curve when you move from one job to another, from one nursing discipline to another, but school nursing really is a different animal. There's no other that requires the nurse to be ready for anything like an emergency room nurse, giving Narcan for drug overdoses, rectal and intranasal rescue medications for seizures, EpiPens for anaphylactic reactions, as well as be skilled in a wide assortment of procedures like tube feedings and urinary catheterizations, like a nurse at a skilled nursing facility, and be able to manage large numbers of students with chronic conditions such as asthma, diabetes, Crohn's disease, like a med surg nurse in acute care. And your school nurse is the only healthcare provider in the building of sometimes up to 2,200-plus students and staff. And all the other adults there speak a totally different language and that's the language of education and not medicine. Consider having to evacuate a building, being the only person to manage all the medications and all the emergencies that could arise with such a stressful event. We have definitely struggled this year to find nurses from the outside to accept the new salary. In the past, we have had six, seven, eight applicants for every position posted and we'd have our pick of qualified bachelors or masters prepared nurses. Several of our nurses actually went back to get to school to get their bachelor's degrees so that they could get a job in Rutherford County Schools. They had good jobs with good pay, but they wanted a career in the school system. And RCS was known to have a good salary, an excellent health services department with high standards, and a program that focused on best practices. But this year has been much more difficult and time-consuming to fill positions. Yes, we have been able to fill them all. But so many nurses saw the salary being offered and simply passed before they were even interviewed. A master's prepared nurse wouldn't even apply. But we still want to attract those nurses. We want their experience, their expertise, their knowledge, their ideas so that we can maintain our standards of care. And while I'm in front of you, I wanted you to understand why a school nurse might need a master's degree because that came up in a previous board meeting last year. And it's for the same reason that any employee wants or needs an advanced degree. It's to gain knowledge, to be better prepared to address situations and problems that they face, to be leaders. And I'm proud to say that we have 13 master's prepared nurses working in this district. On top of that, 14 of your Rutherford County School nurses are nationally certified school nurses and that's more than any other district in the state of Tennessee. And getting this certification is not trivial. It requires months of studying and passing a nationally standardized test. And you know why we have so many certified? Because we expect excellence from our staff. We have high standards and encourage abundant continuing education. We partnered with Coordinated School Health to get the exam fees covered, to encourage our nurses to become certified. There's no financial incentive we can offer, just a few letters after your name on your signature. Let me get back to the issue on the table. Orientation and training of our new hires from outside has been more challenging than it's been in the past when we hired from our PRN pool. Those nurses had had a chance to learn how to function in a school system while also figuring out if this was the field they loved or they just didn't get. And I don't think I'm going to surprise any of our newer staff when I say this, that we are having to provide some extensive additional supports through our clinical charge nurses and our peer mentors for our new hires, something we've just not had to do in the past. And we are not asking for hospital wages. We know this is not a medical setting. We acknowledge that there are certain perks to this job that other nursing jobs don't provide. We are asking to be paid as professionals, as peers and contributing members of the educational team because that is what we are. We work closely with attendance staff and administrators and counselors and teachers to make sure each student is in the best possible health so that each student is healthy and ready to learn. We deal with students with complicated medical conditions who struggle to make it through the school day because of those conditions or their home life or language barriers or transportation issues. We truly are care coordinators for so many of these students. Please give us a decent respectable salary. Give us what teachers with the same years of experience and education make. I feel like it's the right thing to do, even if it's not what every other district is doing. I'm asking you to make RCS the bar to which other districts want to rise. In closing, I just want to reiterate my appreciation of the time the board has taken to look at this. I hope you will ultimately decide to acknowledge and reward the level of skill, experience, and educational background we collectively bring and the difference that it makes in the daily lives of our students.
Ms. Winters, would you mind going over for everyone, including our audience, how many full-time nurses we have, many part-time?
Sure. We have a total of 55 full-time positions. We have four nurses that share two of those positions. So there's four part-time nurses that fill two of those. We have three nurses that cover six schools. So they each have two schools. Campus school in McFadden, one nurse splits that school. Holloway and Kitchell, a nurse splits position, splits those schools. And the nurse at John Coleman covers the virtual school. And we cover the virtual school because they do have on-campus events. They have some diabetics and things that we might need to cover if they're on campus. So we look at all their immunizations and their health alerts for those reasons.
So we have 51 campuses, including the virtual school, and 54 full-time positions.
Fifty-five, when you include three nurses over those six schools. Forty-three schools have a nurse all day. And that includes Roy Waldron Annex and the elementary. So we staff those separately. There's no way one nurse could cover both of those.
Are we vacant? Have we had any vacancies?
We have no vacancies right now.
No vacancies. Do all of them have a BSN?
No. We have three full-time, well, two full-time and one half-time associate degree nurse.
If we, I mean, if the board chooses to go back to the regular schedule, which, by the way, do we top out with teachers at 16 years? Until this year, we did, until we raised the 15 through 20, right? So that's going to change. How will this impact those two associate degree nurses that you have?
Looking, if we try to move them back to the associate nurse column that we had prior to the new structure that we had last year, they would actually lose some salary. There's...
I'm going to go on a limb and I would have to have a logger to present this to me, but I don't think we have the ability to cut their pay.
And I would ask that they be left on that scale since that's what they were hired into. Excuse me.
Left on the scale they're on now?
On the current scale they are now, unless they have a degree change or something like that.
I was having a conversation with Dr. Anthony and I think they met with you earlier this morning. And I don't think that was what you had articulated to them, though.
It looked like they would lose $1,000 apiece, but we have one nurse going just straight across, looking at her years of experience, apples and apples. Her salary going from the current scale where she is to the old associate degree scale, her salary would drop by $5,000. So I would recommend that we stay on that.
And I agree with you totally, but that's not what was intimated to me by them in the meeting with you. Both of them said that you said, well, they'll just have to go back to the way it used to be prior to us implementing this because we never had any, I don't think. Dr. Anthony, can you speak on this? How many associates degree nurses did we have in our system prior to this new change?
That was this year that we hired them.
This was the only year that we had?
We had one full-time associate degree nurse and she was on that scale that is next to the bachelors and the masters for the nurses. And before that, all of our associate degree nurses were PRN or floats so that they could just fill in and not be the primary care nurse, the one that makes all the care plans and relationships with the families. They would fill in, do procedures, cover when somebody is out, that kind of thing. So that's where associate degree nurses filled in before and on a PRN scale. And I do have three bachelors prepared nurses that came in this year on this scale. And if we move them from the current scale to the teacher's scale, collectively, their salaries would go up $27,650 between the three of them, not one of them. And this morning, when Mr. Bowdery and Dr. Anthony and I spoke, I hadn't had any time to look at numbers or compare scales or anything, but the overall message that I'd like to share is that we're able to attract masters and bachelors prepared nurses and offer them a good salary if we're on the teacher's salary scale. And we've never had trouble filling those positions before.
Does that play a major role in retention?
I'm sorry.
Does it play a major role in retention?
It absolutely does. I know that, and of course, I've got one year's worth of data and we've gone through a pandemic and everybody's life is different. So nobody leaves a job for one reason only, not just the pay. But we are having trouble keeping the nurses that we have hired this year. One's already resigned. Lots of issues, you know, on her side, but salary she voiced was one of the reasons. One of my bachelor's nurses is looking, actively looking. I want to be able to assure her that her salary will increase next year because I want her to stay. She's very valuable. But I truly think that if our salary stays the same, she'll find something else that pays better.
Can we go back to, you were explaining the 55 full-time positions?
Yes.
That looks like we have more positions than we need. So can you break that down for us?
Sure. So we have four clinical charge nurses and they are, so if I'm like a principal for my department, for my school, they are my assistant principals. So they are responsible for the day-to-day interaction with their nurses. We divide the system up into four zones. They attend IP meetings, 504 meetings. They deal with angry parents, you know, all the things that the school nurse needs support for. They do the evaluations. They are clinical charge nurses. They help problem solve in the school setting. They also cover schools when I'm out of other options. They'll go relieve somebody if they have to go home sick or have a sick child or something. So they're clinical staff. We do have a full-time LPN position that has been vacant most of the year. We filled it early in the year. I think she worked for three weeks and resigned and I've posted the position over and over and over again. And finally, several people were interested. And the hourly wage is not a problem typically for the LPNs. It's the fact that there's no salary over the summer, so they would have to get another job. And so finally, I've posted it and we do have somebody who's accepted the position. It will start in August. So that position is one. And then we also count one PRN position. So enough money to staff a PRN nurse every day should we have somebody on maternity leave. I can go ahead and plug somebody in there consistently to cover. So that is another person. So we've got three nurses covering six schools. Forty-three schools have one nurse. I have three float nurses, four clinical charge nurses, one full-time LPN, and one PRN, and that's 55 full-time positions. Do it again? Okay. Three nurses cover six schools. Then 43 schools have a nurse all day. I have three float nurses. They're full-time employees and their job is to go cover for that nurse who is taking a personal day or is out sick or has sick kids or something like that. They are RNs. Yes, ma'am. I may have missed saying that before. I'm sorry. Four clinical charge nurses, one LPN, one PRN position.
And then four part-time?
Those are included in the...
Forty-three?
Yes. Yes. So they're full-time equivalents, basically. We have four people who share two positions. They don't get benefits.
I wanted to say I was against this. My heart just told me this was not the right thing to do. And I'm sorry, it's been a rough year. I was afraid it was going to be this way. And I'm so glad that we have this back on the agenda and we can do a course correction. And when something's not working, we need to change it. And I really believe that we need to value our teachers, nurses, like we do value our teachers, and we need to put them back on the salary.
Can I ask about labor over the last, since we've made these changes? Have we seen a lot of leave and new hires? Can you give us some idea of the impact that's had?
Well, and again, it is a little bit hard because some people left because of COVID. It was a lot. This academic year, we've had 14 people, 14 employees leave employment with us. Seven of those were full-time and seven were PRN. And those PRNs, those were some of the ones that we hoped would take a full-time position. And I know at one point, Mr. Bowdery even extended, you know, if we could get these nurses to take the old, go back on the teacher's salary scale, would that entice them? But at that point, our pool had diminished and some of those nurses had already taken positions at hospitals and, you know, hospitals are paying really well right now. And we're not trying to compete with hospitals. We're really not. We're just trying to attract a good caliber of nurse. We have hired a total of 20 people this year. It's exhausting. My poor charge nurses, bless you. They do all the orientation and that includes the agency LPNs because they have to be trained in our methods as well. because they have to be trained in our methods as well and our documentation and where to get paperwork and, and all the things. They have a miniscule training, but it is a training that has to happen. So I want to say five or six of them were those agency nurses that had to just be oriented. And five of those 20 have already left. Yeah, we've had a lot of turnover. But again, and I don't, I don't want to make it all look like salary because it's not all about salary. There are a lot of things that impact, you know, somebody's satisfaction in a job. And, and sometimes conditions just aren't what they, you know, are looking for in a job.
How many nurses did we lose? You said non-COVID related. So how many did we lose related to COVID workload and?
Full-time people. One left in the heat of COVID at the very beginning of the year, but her words were literally, she felt unsafe with all the demands placed on nurses and she didn't realize the breadth of responsibility that school nurses had. And she had been a PRN nurse. So she had filled in, but she'd never had her own school that she had to manage, make sure she got hepatitis B vaccine, offer acceptances and declinations, and train all the first responders and all the things that encompass a daily job at the school. You know, she'd filled in and covered procedures and done things, but she really didn't understand the magnitude of the position. So that one was multi-rationale.
I was also one of the ones that was against this, cutting the salaries or changing the salary. Our students are too important to take the gamble on trying to cut salaries and save some money. I don't think parents really know that all of our schools don't have a full-time nurse. We've got nurses that are going from A to B during their lunch. We've got people that are literally spending a lot of time in their day going from one location to another location. Our nurses are not like assisted living or the community care centers. Those community care centers have a limit. It's probably less than 500. We have children that are ambulatory and have critical care. This is not a place, I mean, everybody wants to be conservative with the budget, but this is not where we need to cut. This is not where we need to outsource our nurses or some of the nurses that see these children that never see any other medical personnel. And they follow them and chart them from year to year.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and we need to do right by our nurses.
And our department doesn't grow exponentially. We don't add a position, but every, normally we request a position when we open a new school for that school. It's not always approved depending on the size of the school and where we are with numbers anyway, but in the growth category, I feel like this is not an exorbitant amount of money to be looking to add, not every year, every other year or something to that effect. And those six schools that don't have a nurse all day right now, if students were there that required a nurse to be in the building, if they had those needs, we would rearrange our staffing to make sure that we had somebody there. We have the number of nurses we need. We just need to make sure that they're paid appropriately, in my opinion.
What is the impact to the budget? What are we looking at?
Well, the, the numbers that, that I have just show that, right, go ahead.
You're looking between four to six million dollars for everything.
And that's exactly why I wanted to wait on giving the nurses a 5% raise and stuff.
One of the things that will help a little, not this year, but coming on, will be the one to 250, one to 750.
Yes, sir.
So going back to the pay scale that we've changed, it's, it's a two to four million impact instantly?
No, we don't have that many that have actually left.
Right.
They're currently under, it will be a slow gradual thing.
Right, right.
Because that was my understanding that we were not cutting these salaries.
Correct.
It'd be a slow gradual thing. I think you may have what, did we say five or six maybe that were on the previous?
So there are three bachelor's nurses that if, that were hired on our brand-new scale. And if we move them to this current year's teacher's salary scale, the increase would be roughly 27.5, 27.6, $27,000 more, between all three of them, between the three of them. Yeah.
It would take a while for, I mean, we haven't seen any savings really, to be honest with you, because we didn't have that many to leave.
This is a planned through attrition.
Right, that was a, yeah, planned through attrition. And I will say, and you're absolutely right, but I, I, we have 60-something positions available and certified and classified. And it has nothing to do with the money. They just left all over the world. Yeah, absolutely.
We've got teacher shortages. We've got janitor shortages. So I don't see that we're really experiencing anything different than what we're experiencing everywhere.
No.
I do agree, if it's only $27,000 we're talking about here.
No, it's not much.
So since we have employ, we have nurses that have been hired, so we're kind of all over the map.
Right, right.
Can you tell us what the recommended, how do we, how do we right this ship? The goal when we visited this last time was, yes, we were in COVID. We knew we needed more employees in, to serve in that medical season and that craziness. So the objective was to free up, bring in, and add to it. I think we've been able to add a couple positions.
Right, the agency staff. And that has been a game changer to have an LPN who can simply take care of kids who need medications, tube feedings, catheterizations. In those high schools, Blackman High School, have one licensed provider just doing those things. And the RN managing the school and the emergencies and paperwork and parent calls and all the care plans, communicating with doctors. That has been a game changer and we are forever grateful to this board for those, those agency nurses.
We've been able to make some positive changes, but the negative impact exists still.
Yes. Long-term, I see it being much more difficult to attract nurses that want, want to build a career here and stay. And training is time-consuming and expensive. Anytime you hire a new employee, you're taking time to, to, to get them up to speed. And one of my staff has to do that. So every time we have to have that turnover, there's more manpower that's required to, to make that happen. We did not have, and again, some attrition due to COVID. If this were a non-COVID year, I, I don't, this may look a little different, but the, the number of people who have left for various reasons. We just don't typically have turnover. We have PRN nurses waiting for somebody. They're going to retire or their husband got a job in someplace and they're going to leave. So, you know, yay, a position. So we have people literally waiting for positions and we just don't have that now.
You said you had three floaters?
Yes.
You used that word?
Yes.
And what are they actually? Are they PRNs?
Nope. They are full-time salaried nurses. And they, they do exactly that. They float. If I have somebody on maternity leave, they, they cover their, somebody had a knee replacement this year and they, I stationed one at that school. Sometimes I don't have somebody out until the morning when somebody throws up in the car. And so, you know, all of a sudden that nurse has to, that, that nurse's child is sick and so I need to emergently send her to that school. When they aren't covering a school for a call-out or, or something of that nature, they are at those high acuity schools. And we do have an acuity tool that we get data every two weeks, collect that, and run a report that shows where the highest needs are in the district. And, and there are a few schools that go up and down amongst the, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12, depending on how many students have been recently enrolled. Some, some of those factors that change from, from week to week, the number of students that we're seeing, if it was their stomach bug going through the system, that kind of thing. But that way we can see, we've got an agency nurse scheduled to work at that school. It's the highest acuity. We've got an agency nurse that works every other day at these two schools. And then I see that this is where I need to send that other float nurse. If I don't have an assignment for her, she's going to go let that nurse do care coordination and she's going to see the kids for the day. Or she's going to help her do all her immunizations or something. So she'll be another pair of hands for that high-acuity school.
Can I ask a question about insulin-dependent students? In a medical environment, when we're administering, when, when medication like that is being administered, isn't there a double-check situation?
Right.
So if we only ever have one nurse at every school, how does that work?
It's not a requirement in a public health environment. It's a hospital requirement in acute care. And we just have to be really, really, really careful. And that's one of the reasons we closed the clinic at lunchtime because that's when all the diabetic students are coming in and we're counting carbs and we're looking at their ratios and making sure that, you know, we've got five students with type 1 diabetes and five sets of orders. We're making sure that we've got the right set of orders. And was that thing that he ate on the nutritional calendar or was that something that somebody else brought from home? Counting all those carbs, making sure we get the ratios correct. And then we, you know, we've got students with continuous glucose monitors and insulin pumps and lots of variety of diabetes management. That is our most acute student. The most, the highest room for error is with our students with type 1 diabetes, especially they're anywhere from pre-K to 12-plus. Some of them are high schoolers and able to manage their own care. We see them twice a year just to check on them. Others, we see five, six, seven times a day because they're having highs and lows. They are sneaking snacks. They're not taking their insulin. They're, all the things. All things involved. Right.
Any other questions? So what would be the recommendation? How do we, how do we make improvements? What is needed from us?
From my perspective, I would hope that the board would put nurses back on the teacher's salary scale, just apple to apple. Bachelor's degree, up to 16 years' experience. Master's degree, up to 16 years of experience. Pay them the same. For these associate nurses, I think it would be a disservice to them to pay them less because we're in this transitional period. And I think it just makes sense to leave them where they are on that scale. It's two and a half people, two full-time, one half-time person.
You're talking about grand, just grandfathering them in?
Those, those people only, okay. Those three people on that salary so that they're, they don't lose money in the deal.
And that's the 27.5 that you were talking about?
That's actually, no, that's the bachelor's nurses that, it, it, between those three nurses, they drop their salary about 7,000 a year.
Okay, okay.
And I just, that's not fair, in my opinion.
Got you.
So 21 total approximately?
Yes.
Okay. So you would recommend that we grandfather the three?
Associate nurses on the current pay schedule, scale.
And return?
Return all other...
To the previous pay scale.
To the previous teacher's salary scale that's...
Now, these three positions, we're talking about grandfathering in. Will they stay the same if these people leave or we're doing this for these people?
I would say that any new hires would go back into the teacher's salary scale. That we just don't want these nurses to lose money.
Sure we didn't.
Sure, no.
Okay.
It would be sort of a, an inactive salary scale.
Thank you. We appreciate the information you provided.
Thank you so much.
Members of the board, if you have any other questions, otherwise, we can take action on this this evening or we can move it to another meeting. It's entirely up to you.
I'm going to approve.
I would like to move.
I third.
Okay.
I, I didn't, I, I voted against this last time and I want to make it right. I third.
So let's formulate a motion, Mr. Reed. Can you help us make a proper motion, please?
He's looking at one in the...
If I heard what the discussion was, the, the motion would be to put the nurses back on the teacher's scale, on the, on the teacher's scale, but to grandfather the existing associate nurses on their current pay scale. So that would be the motion.
Okay. A second. Ms. Sharp makes the motion. Ms. Maxwell seconds. Ms. Hopkins, would you please take the roll? Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Holman?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
HR has asked for an effective date. When would we want this to be effective?
And this start with the next page?
Next fiscal year, seven months.
The fiscal year, right, so we can get in the 5% and all that other stuff. Change it all at once? Would that work?
They can't, they can't do that now? They can't?
Well, they just have one month. Not even one month. They just have three weeks. Ms. Winters? Stand up and tell us. When should this start? Right, to figure in rises and those kinds of things. Because y'all, the, will that work?
Can we make a motion by someone to make it effective July 1, 2022?
Sure can. I move that we make it effective July 1, 2022.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Hopefully that'll help you hire some over this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Winters. We appreciate you. Next item, Mr. Spurla.
All right, number nine, transportation found on tab two. The Transportation Department will be providing bus services to support summer camp program completely funded by 10 All Core funds. 10 All Core funds will provide contractors $440 a day for the duration of the 20 scheduled sessions. Dr. Sullivan, can you give me a number on how many kids we're going to be servicing?
Yes, sir. I have a whole lot of numbers if you guys want some numbers. Elementary school, we are looking at our target is 3,240 kids. We right now have 2,969 registered. It's a 1 to 15 ratio and basically 360 kids per site. We have nine elementary sites. We did structure a little bit different this year. We made elementary, the K-1 grades were a higher number of teachers so that we could focus on those students the most. And then we went from basically 90 kids per grade, K-1. At second and third, we went to 60 kids per grade. And then in fourth and fifth, we went to 30 kids per grade. Of course, we have ESL structured setting, PE, all those. Middle school, we have four sites. Our middle school enrollment's down a little bit. We're only at about 950. We need 1,200 as our target. We have four middle school sites, 12 teachers per grade, and then two STEM teachers, two fine arts, two PE, nursing, all those things. Those are all paid for out of summer grant and those provide transportation. The one that is paid for out of ESAR is high school, is high school. And so that is strictly coming out of our ESAR funds because it didn't feel like, I guess, that high school needed anything. So we are focusing strictly with ESAR funding. We have one summer school site for students that are either taking a first-time credit or they are, they failed a course below a 50. That's at Blackman High School. We have two semesters and that's 20 to 22 teachers. And then we have an ESL newcomer class at Smyrna High School. We also have room to expand that if needed. If we have more newcomers that want to, we can also add them at Laverne and one at the South End as well if needed. We then are offering credit recovery again at each comprehensive high school. So that will be our eight comprehensive high schools and those for students who need to recover a credit when they scored a 50 to a 69 at any time. And so we're hoping that should be the last year of that time. So for credit recovery, we have credit recovery during the school year. We need to make sure that our students take that opportunity during the school year and don't just wait till the end of the school year to do credit recovery in the summer. So.
We qualified for the 10 All Core Grant because we were one of 50 that, and you might want to go through how we partner with other organizations in order to receive this funding. I think it was $410,000.
It was. And a big part of that is our after-school tutoring, Tennessee All Core. That was an initiative from the governor and really involved Governor Haslem as well. And so that started with K-5 this year for tutoring. We will break it up into six eights. We'll have K-8 tutoring after school at least two to three days per week with transportation divided, provided starting in September.
How many routes do we have, Mr. Lee, running?
This, this summer, we'll be running 64 regular routes and 13 special ed buses. Those on tracks will go.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the Rutherford County Schools 10 All Core funded bus summer camp agreement as presented.
Thank you, members of the board. Questions, comments, concerns?
How many sped? How many sped did you say?
13.
13. And there are 13 regular routes?
64 regular routes, 13 special ed. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons why there's so many is because unlike a regular school time, they're, they're from different parks of the, of the county that we have to pick up because we have these specific sites.
We don't have every school. We're still confined to the time limits that a child can be on a bus. So basically, you've got three schools worth of children going to one school.
Right.
So we've got multiple buses trying to pick up students from three different school zones and taking them to one school. So it, it's, the routes get further stretched out, which means time, which means we can get fewer children on the bus. But we'll be okay.
And I would like to thank, that is a collaborative effort from the four of us and then all of our department chairs. It's, we start in January to start on summer and it is non-stop. Elizabeth Davis has done amazing with our learning loss supervisor and Mark Goyen, of course, over federal programs. But Trey, Dr. Anthony, Mr. Boder, they've, it's a collaborative effort.
We certainly appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, you see the motion? Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item.
All right, number 10, one, purchase of imagined reading, uh, imagined reading license. ESL department is seeking approval to purchase 2,500 imagined learning reading license for English language learners for the 2022, 2023 school year. The total cost of the license is $37,500 and it will be paid from Title III funds. Motion to approve the purchase of the imagined reading license for ESL department as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion, I'm, make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item.
All right, the next item is purchase of language curriculum from Benchmark Education. ESL department is seeking approval to purchase, hello, a newcomer curriculum for English language learners? That's what that accent marked. Okay. Y'all got me off task. A newcomer curriculum for English language learners. The total cost of this curriculum is $54,450 and it will be paid from the Title III funds. Recommend motion to approve this purchase of newcomer curriculum from Benchmark Education for our ESL department as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. Questions, comments, concerns, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item.
All right, the next item is the human resource job description for these three benefit specialist positions for, for our, our health insurance. Under the direct supervision of the Assistant Superintendent Human Resources and Student Services, these three human resource benefit specialist positions will perform a variety of tasks associated with the coordination of the employee benefits. Board approval is requested for these three positions to begin on July 1 of 2022. Motion to approve the three human resource benefit specialist positions due to the movement from the county self-funded insurance and health plan to the group health plans offered by the state of Tennessee for medical coverage. Funding for these three positions are through the GPS fund for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 as presented. Dr. Anthony, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, we definitely need those to start us out for July 1. We've posted our senior benefits specialist. And one of the challenges, most of the benefit specialists have a different type of, let's say, attendance method. We're looking at people from different positions in insurance. They work remotely. So that's been a challenge. A lot of them want to work remotely and not be located, you know, centrally. So we had that posted through Monday. So if anybody knows of anybody that might be our benefit specialist, senior, we would enjoy them to apply for sure. And then also, we need these positions to help us with our enrollment and our training will start July 1 with the state.
We offered one to a lead and he wanted to work remotely, right? Is that correct?
It is correct.
And going to the state saved us $7 million? Was that?
It will, well, not quite seven, around six. Six million.
Thank you.
Dr. Anthony, I have no doubt you need these, no doubt at all. What concerns me is that we are looking at positions to post on July 1. I, I really wish, is this set in stone? I guess what I want to ask you, because you said something about training from the state. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yes, when we spoke with the trainer from the State Department, they said that the lead specialist would, which is a senior specialist that we already have posted, that position would begin training earlier. And then once that supervisory training would go into place, then when they begin to train them, the three sub-specialists, starting in July, because we want to take advantage of the first week in August. There's a traveling state training that we think we could benefit from by being first time, you know, going on to the state plan. So we want to make sure we get somebody definitely by August, the first week in August, so.
Because there's a supplementary training in the first week of August.
Right, and we want to take advantage of that and then also take advantage of their ability for the state to bring people out, not only from Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Cigna, but also from the State Department the first week in August and to coordinate different areas of our county, you know, zoned areas to be able to come out and ask questions during that week as well. So we pretty much have reserved that first week in August to receive that additional training, the specialized, as well as have those people while they're in our location to come out and talk to our employees.
When is our, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When is our first meeting in July, the 5th? All right.
That sounds right, first work day, just.
Did I make that up?
Yes, on a Tuesday. I think that sounds right, Monday, Tuesday.
I think it's the day up to the 4th, isn't it? It's the 5th.
Do you anticipate having, I mean, would, these individuals need to be on board, no later probably than, I mean, as soon as possible, but no later than September, early October?
I'd like them that first week in August so they can participate in that training.
So what's your backup plan if you can't find these individuals that want to work? You know, they want to be, you know, they want to do the at-home work. Have you had, have you thought about that?
Yes, we may have to look at creating some kind of policy for some kind of blended where they have a certain amount of days coming in the office, certain amount of days working remotely, talking to other districts. Some of them have different brokerage opportunities that they're participating with other companies to be able to fill those positions. So we'll get them filled for sure, but we'd like to have them in-house if possible.
Is there a way that we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there a way that we could house them out in our district that would be near to their home?
Yes, that's, that's our goal. And we've been working with Trey to find, help us find locations and places and other buildings to, so we'll have someone in the Smyrna area, someone in the Laverne area, someone in the Murfreesboro area, and then someone centrally located here.
Oh, good. So we're not asking them to all come down here to the?
We'll start here for training and then, then we'll have them to go out into the areas. So we'll be looking for space and hopefully the principals will have a little, maybe a little location for us.
We have so much space available, hard to choose. I have a question, and maybe you already covered this, forgive me if I'm being redundant. Is there anything that prevents us from allowing them to work from home?
We just don't have right now a policy to allow them to.
Okay.
Just pay in that opportunity.
Because as we balloon at central office and we add more people, more space, if that's, I mean, that seems to me to be a benefit, if you will. And maybe that might be something we explore.
Absolutely. I think, I think as we post these jobs even more, we'll be able to see greater impact of the remote opportunities.
I have a question. So the three, the three positions, did the state say we need three positions based on the number of people we've got?
Yes, Mr. Boder, Mr. Boder met with them and they recommended based on the number that we would be putting on the plan and the size of our district.
Participants, okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask you another question. Wouldn't there be a problem if we tabled this until July 5? Go ahead, you, I mean, you hit us with it. Just say yes or no.
I think I'd like to see the pool, just as right now that we're seeing the challenges of getting the supervisor. I'd like to see what it is. Right now, sometimes it may be they have the experience in the field, but not the degree. And they may have that one year of supervisory role, but there may be those hiccups that we can come back and ask the board to reexamine the job description and ask for maybe a, a different prerequisite.
So you're a little bit worried about filling this, kinda? It's what, more or less what you're saying?
Right.
And if we put it off?
I think it'll be easier to fill these than it will be the supervisor.
It really is a.
Okay.
It's, it's a major undertaking to do this, so you're talking about training them and, and, you know, for the state? Now, how many applicants did you have for the, for the lead?
It's a good question.
There's about six or seven.
Meaning we're qualified?
Only three were degreed. And I would say our second choice declined.
One of the things that we're seeing even in principal positions, we're not getting that many. I think we got 11 for Blackman High School, which is a outstanding high school. And about 12 or 13 maybe for Oakland Middle and less than that so far for Rockville. And some of those are duplicates doing, applying for both positions. So there is a deficit out there as far as applicants are concerned. So there need, probably needs to be a backup plan, so I'm trying to give you a hint there, okay?
Is there any apprehension in exploring further? I think you did touch on many of these positions currently are remote. So is there any apprehension on our part to present the board with a policy that would allow that to happen?
Uh, no, as we're looking at it, I think we will have to look at some kind of combination. And during certain portions of enrollment, so that they can have the interaction with their employees, we'll need to maybe change that up and have more time for them to be in-house at that time. But just looking at the background, the one that we were looking at to be the lead, he said that even the state of Tennessee went remote before COVID for four days a week. So that is the trend in the insurance business. So it's, you know, interesting to hear what we're going to be looking at and look at the ideals.
I appreciate that information. So I wonder if maybe instead of pushing it off to July, can we push, table this until next? Or, you know, the next two meetings? I know you'd like to get moving and we respect that, but it sounds to me like if we created a remote option or, I don't know, a hybrid.
To help you out.
It would be easy to recruit. It would help.
Let me throw this out here. Could they not make a motion to modify the job description to include that at this meeting right here? Uh, Mr. Reed, is that a possibility to do that?
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah. You want me to do that? Want me to do that?
Okay, yes, but just to be clear.
Okay.
Ms. Ridley, maybe you can help us, I hate to put you on the spot here, but is there an existing policy that prohibits us from allowing staff to work remotely or in a hybrid capacity? And will we need to modify or create policy to make this possible?
Right now, we have a policy, it's 5.1151, which is tell work during emergencies. And of course, that was before my time, but I'm assuming that came about during the COVID. So there is already something existing, but the way that it's styled right now says during emergencies. So we could definitely take a look at that for the next policy committee meeting and see what we could put in there to make.
But if you had it in a job description, if you, if you amended it into a job description, you wouldn't need a policy. Am I correct in that, Mr. Reed? If you amended it in a job description of a specific occupation?
Well, you would still have to comply with the policies, whatever the policies are. So we could amend it in the job description, but we would have to go back and amend any policies that are conflicting with that. So we'd have a two-step process with regard to it.
But by doing the amendment to the job description, you, and, and with the board's approval, she could get started on drawing a pool of, of applicants much sooner.
How quickly could we get that policy so that they coincide?
We had talked about doing another policy committee in June.
Okay.
Doing one June, July, August, because we have a few to review. So we could definitely, hopefully, do early June and work on this, tweaking this one.
I would prefer, if it would be okay, because this might open up that pool, I would prefer to have a policy and a job description that are, that complement each other as opposed to doing one and then the other. So would that be awful if we tabled this until after?
That'd be fine.
Okay. And then?
That'll work.
Would we be able to make this an emergency-type policy when we, when we do bring it to the board?
Yeah, you could, yes.
So that they're, they complement, thank you.
Yeah.
Your, your other point was the fact that people had a lot of experience but didn't have degrees. Is there an equation there where we can equate so many years' experience to a degree? Or it, and it opens up your opportunities. It happens a lot of times in the industry, you see it, so I was just wondering if.
And that's what we used in the job description. We used what the county general had used as their prerequisite, or equivalent experiences.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would help us to get that, but unfortunately, a lot of them did not have those equivalent experiences.
Ms. Ridley, can we bring, excuse me, Ms. Spurlock, can we bring a policy to the board for alteration or adoption without it having to go to the policy committee? Mr. Reed? Okay. Okay, just want to make sure.
But I can send out dates tomorrow morning for early June.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
So we're going to table this until June?
The June meeting.
And try to get that changed so that we can come, okay. I just want to make sure I understood what we.
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Reed, to table this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Be clear what, what meeting we're tabling this to? Are we just tabling it now or are we going to move it to a specific meeting?
Move it to, to the first meeting in June.
Yeah, can we have a motion to that effect?
Okay. Members of the board?
Go ahead. I, I make a motion that we move this particular resource job description to the first meeting in June. And I can't remember when that is.
The first board meeting.
Board meeting in June. We'll do the policy before that.
That's June 16.
June 16. Dr. Anthony, will that work? Okay. So to June 16.
Ms. Bratton, thank you. Ms. Maxwell, thank you. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right, number 12. Is the Title I contract found on tab five. Laverne High School is requesting to create two new, uh, just, a job descriptions for the 2022, 2023 school year. These positions will be used to meet the needs identified from the needs assessment conducted by the school this spring. One of the positions will be an attendance facilitator and one position will be a behavior and restorative practice facilitator. These job descriptions are included. These positions are pending. Our consolidated funding application being approved and it will be funded through Title I funds for the 2022, 2023 school year. Motion to approve the job descriptions of the tennis facilitator and the behavior restorative practice facilitator for Laverne High School to fund through Title I funds for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Spurlock, questions, comments, concerns, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right, number 13 is a legal, found on tab six. This is a disciplinary hearing appeal. As always, you have three choices as you look over this. You can affirm the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority. You can overturn the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority or you can grant a hearing before the board. You will need to take a motion on one of these three items.
Thank you, members of the board. You have emailed a file, Ms. Ridley. We obviously can't ask any questions at this point that are specific to the student, but if anybody has questions that are nonspecific, we can ask. Otherwise, you see the options before you and we'll entertain a motion.
Move to affirm the decision of DHS.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Esses. Thank you, Mr. Holden. So the motion is to affirm. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
All right, number fourteen, RSP Associates' Proposal for Professional Services Regarding Countywide Zoning. It's found on Tab seven. At the boardwork session on March eighth of 2022, Robert, uh, Rob Schwartz of RSP and Associates provided a presentation regarding professional services, which the firm, uh, could provide to assist the school's zoning, future school locations, and maximizing the use of present facilities. RSP and Associates worked for the number of larger school systems across the nation, and it, and they have assisted Clarksville Montgomery County on zoning and growth-related matters. On March the twenty-second, the board voted to have RSP Associates present a proposed scope of work and pricing to review countywide zoning and to minimize future rezoning, and to provide stability for the parents and students and optimize the use of existing, uh, facilities and proactively plan for growth. RSP has presented the attached proposal. You have a motion to approve the board to enter into a contract with RSP Associates to provide the services that are listed within that, that proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Uh, board members, as you recall, this is, um, we requested RSP to present a proposal to us. We have Rob Schwartz who's here tonight to go through his proposal and have a brief presentation to the board about it. The board ultimately will have to make a decision tonight as to whether you want to engage his firm to proceed on with doing the work, and if so, what components of his proposal you want to ask him to do at this point. The guy kind of cut to the chase with respect to his, his different portions of his proposal is, um, in section eight of the contract is the highlight of the, kind of the cost for his various components. He has a capacity analysis, um, and the cost for that is basically eighty thousand. Uh, a capacity analysis of the existing facilities they have, we have with, which includes building tours, where his staff would go through and inspect all the buildings in the school system and see what may, what space might be available or how space might be used better or differently than is currently being used. Could also be provided. Uh, that would involve going through every building, um, that we have in the school system. The additional fee for that, um, has been quoted at seventy thousand dollars for that. Um, his enrollment analysis, um, which is probably something the board would want to do, is a cost of fifty thousand. And there's a boundary analysis of current zones that they can provide for fifteen thousand. And then a public facilitation payment where his firm would come in and meet with, um, the, the public, have a number of public meetings, get input on any kind of plan that's proposed or any ideas with respect to, that he's made to the board, would be an additional forty thousand dollar expense if we want to go and do the public facilitation component. So to highlight those and just repeat myself, just so you've got that clear. Montgomery, and then let me say this too. Montgomery County did not do all of these. Montgomery County did some of these, and Mr. Schwartz can tell us which portions Montgomery County did. So, but you have the capacity analysis, which kind of analyzes the floor plans of our existing schools and would tell you how many students you can fit in those schools and how they can best be optimized. That is an eighty thousand dollar cost. If we want to have them actually inspect every school and actually his staff go through every school and inspect them, the cost of, for that will be seventy thousand in addition to the eighty. Um, the enrollment analysis, uh, which he looks at the demographics of each school and, um, the various grades and such, um, is fifty thousand. The boundary analysis for our zones would be fifteen thousand, and the public facilitation portion would be forty thousand. So, um, I would, with that, I asked Mr. Schwartz if he could come forward and kind of give you the details of what each one of these components consist of. And ultimately, the board needs to make a decision which you want to hire him, if any, to do. All right, good evening. Glad to be here. Got here just as the storms were happening.
Welcome to middle Tennessee.
Where, wherever I go, it seems like it's raining this time of year.
Wait a few minutes, it'll change.
All right, so tonight, I'm just going to briefly go over everything because I think when I spoke to you guys last time, I spoke to you in regard to, here's some things that we did for Montgomery County. Here's some things that we can do. Here's some things that we heard from you that you maybe would like to have us explore. So I want to make sure that you guys understand each of those components that Jeff went over with you guys. Again, you, you know, you've heard about me, so I don't need to tell you more about this. There were really four areas, um, that we were focusing on with our conversation with you. And they each have a specific, um, ability to help you make some of your decisions. So the enrollment analysis focuses on what your enrollment could be. So we look at things that could range from your live birth data, migration trends, new developments. How are all of those impacting what we see for students in each specific area of your district? We even get into subdivision life cycles, the different product types. So is it an apartment? Is it's single-family homes? All of that is integrated into what that analysis is that would give you a forecast for each of your buildings for the next five years. That starts the conversation of where is enrollments? And that builds into then the capacity analysis. So how many built, how many students can fit into your buildings? And is it related to some of the special programming you have? So special education, English language learners. And so in the capacity analysis, we've broken that out two different ways. And I'm going to give you a quick visual of what those differences are and why each of them build on each other. But the goal there is that we would know the number of students that could be properly educated with the programs that are in each of your buildings. And I'll, I'll talk more about capacity here in a moment. So once we know how many kids can fit in a building, the number of kids that would be in each of these areas of your community, we can start getting into these what-if scenarios. So that's the boundary analysis. So how do we redistribute, um, students to meet what those capacity limitations might be in those buildings? And also what's set into motion, um, specifically maybe where you need to build new buildings. Going through that process, that's the analysis. There's also then this boundary facilitation process where our team can either work directly with your administrators. We could work as purely a third party to, um, work with the community to try to find out what is the best solutions based on things related to guiding principles. The sandbox of, of what the group is supposed to address with this situation. And then some prioritized boundary criteria that become benchmarks determine what plan would be better as it relates to those boundary criteria. The advantage of that, those type of processes is that you take out a lot of the subjectiveness and you base it on some of the data sets on why you need to do some of the changes that may be proposed with enrollment and, uh, building utilization. So again, we have these four different, um, boxes that we were asked that, hey, maybe we need some of that assistance with you. It starts with the data, right? So we have to understand the enrollment. We have to understand what's happening in those buildings. And then we start doing the what-ifs and then the, the facilitation with the community. If I go back to what we did with Montgomery County. So we did their enrollment analysis, their boundary analysis, and then we had a public facilitation with them. And it was specific because we were still kind of working through some of the COVID protocols. So we had some Zoom meetings. We had some in-person meetings, um, but that's what we did with them. They felt comfortable with what they had for, um, capacity of their buildings that we didn't have to do anything with their capacity. What we've put together for you shows, hey, if you need that, here's what that then breaks out into looking for what we would provide. Let me, let me tell you a little bit about the capacity. So, um, the first part of this, um, we would be looking at your floor plans, your facility master schedules, so the class schedules that are occurring, um, to be able to determine how those spaces are being used. Um, we would even have, um, meetings with district administration about where things are headed with some of these specialized programs. Um, I imagine some of these programs may be in spaces that, um, would just kind of use them. We don't have space in these buildings. So how do we design space to get toward housing those programs? Maybe the way you would like to see them housed in the future. Um, we also would work with the building administrators on how are they, how are they utilizing the buildings? What are their experiences? So that's, that's the core part of the capacity analysis. A lot of, um, going through a lot of, uh, the difference informations that you have at different points with different departments in your district. The building tours, this is a, a value add-on to the capacity. This is where our team that we have persons that would either be a certified education facility planner, a current administrator, or a former administrator, where we're going through your buildings and we're, we're auditing some of these spaces and observing how those spaces may be effectively or ineffectively, um, working in those specifics for those buildings. The huge advantage of that is that we're able to give you things that go into how maybe you can repurpose space, um, to get additional capacity. Um, we might be able to come across things that are related to how those programs are utilizing the spaces in those buildings. Um, and there's always so much that we learn when we go through, um, each of these buildings. And there's probably nuances, um, for each of your buildings based on when they were built. This also starts the ability to have what I would call an education spec for your buildings. So things like we always want to have in an elementary building, a art room in a designated space, and it has a kiln. Or something that's related to specifics of how the programs take place in your buildings. So this is really kind of the, the start of that or building on what you may already have. If I take you through a, a building plan, when we get into this, um, I mentioned this last time that we designate, and I always start with elementary buildings. They're just the easiest. When we get to middle schools and high schools, there's, there's just different nuances with what's programmed in there. But identifying those core spaces, so on this visual here, you see these are classrooms, so they're red. Um, then we have some of these elective spaces. So where's our art, our music, our gym? And, and sometimes we have limitations there, like how many lunch periods can actually be in, um, let's say your cafeteria? Is it being served in your gym? Um, how does that all relate to maybe some of the widths of your corridors as students are moving around? So, um, elective spaces. And then we have some of these special use spaces that might be related to some of those programs like ELL, special education, and so on. So you start to have this, this block groupings of what this floor plan looks like and then how you can associate that as you move programs to different buildings. It's going to change what that capacity is. Um, when I talk about these tours, um, this is just kind of a visual of what we did for a district that's just on the north side of Wichita, Kansas. Um, we did Wichita, Kansas, is, I think, a hundred thirty-some buildings. I'm here three years ago. Did the same audit that we're talking about with your district. But all of it is coined towards, as our team goes through these buildings, we can vet these spaces and have, um, a uniformity of what capacity is across your district at each of the buildings, at each of the levels, and even the specialized buildings. When we get into what the final product starts to look like, may look something like this, maybe a little bit different. But, um, this is where it starts to highlight what's happening with these core spaces, elective spaces, special spaces. And then if you look on the bottom left-hand, I give an example of some of the repurposing that may take place, um, in this district. And some of this is related to how they are going to move forward, um, post-COVID with how they're going to use their cafeteria spaces. Um, no longer going to use them as cafeterias. So, um, we have some opportunities to do some different things in, uh, some of their buildings. Lastly, with a process. So this is the process that we use with Clarksville Montgomery County. We, again, we can do some things. I know in the past you've done boundary changes. And so you have something that's kind of in place for maybe how you've, um, worked through this. And, and we can come alongside and, and help your team. Um, we can do this, um, exclusive as we did in Montgomery County. The key thing is that we have different elements that allow the process to be successful. The first is there is a direct link with administration, a direct link with the Board of Education in understanding what your goals are for whatever this may look like. The second part of this, if there's a committee process, is working with a committee so that, um, we can kind of throw some of these ideas off them, vet through some of the things that may be nuances, problems, when it starts to go out to the public. The third part of this is the public input. There has to be some sort of interaction with the public for them to weigh in on what these decisions are, a way for them to understand, why are we having to do some of these changes? Um, what's the sense in, in, or logic to why we have to do this? And then, of course, there's RSP as a consultant to work all of this around. All I can tell you, when we facilitate a process, um, over the last ten years, um, because of the manner where we really try to be transparent, we try to push the information out in a way that people can be educated. So when they come to these meetings, it's not like, I didn't know we were going to do this change. Um, they can, they can really understand the impacts and why we're having to make these decisions. What I do know is when we get to these, um, public inputs, um, we, or when the board adopts the plan, there's usually less than ten people that are there. And most of the people, when they are there to voice their challenges, it's usually specific things that might be related to, let's say, my student has a IEP plan. My student has some sort of special need. Is there going to be some sort of way in which, um, my student will still be able to experience what they need to have without some of the changes that may be a negative to what that educational outcome might be? Um, so that's, that's the processes. Um, this is the same slide that I showed, um, you before of, of that process. I want to open this up to, to other questions or comments. Because again, I know that there was a lot that I threw at you in March, and hopefully this helps narrow down. Here's what we did in Montgomery County. Here's what we heard you guys asking. And here's what we can do to, to fill in, uh, for some of this stuff that's related to capacity or a public process for boundary changes.
Thank you. Appreciate the information. Um, Mr. Lee, I have a question for you. Um, you and I spoke previously about our facilities, and is, that is something in your job description. You're very familiar with our facilities. Is there a level of this, and you have said, told me yes, but a level of this where you can do an evaluation within our system to help save the taxpayers some of this money and work with, your team can work with the consultant?
Yes, and a lot of that, some of that information's been shared with you guys, uh, previously. I'm not opposed to sharing it, you know, with them and let them look through it. You know, maybe instead of, and I'm picking a number, instead of fifty thousand, it's fifteen or somewhere. You know, there may be something that doesn't hurt for another set of eyes to look at it. But yes, there is some things that we, square footage, uh, analysis, the, the, uh, capacities. Uh, we talk about that a lot. You know, we've, we've, we have what we use.
Teacher pupil ratio.
Student, teacher ratio, pupils, number of classrooms. Um, and when we look at core, I said this the other night in Rockvale, trying to make sure it's understood. When you say core capacity, that's the capacity that the building was originally designed to carry. We have very few schools that we have not gone in already and taken the teacher work rooms away and converted them into ESL classrooms, taken the closets away and made them, uh, an office or something to where we've can, uh, a, a large number of our schools, we've converted every single possible. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody could come in with a different set of eyes and look at it and go, you can maybe get another fifty kids in here if you use this room for this and that room for that. Um, but yes, some of that we do have, and I don't mind sharing it.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions, comments?
I think you're onto something, Ms. Johnson. Um, I, all of us toured five of our high schools about a month ago, and I think we do have a good grasp. I think Mr. Lee's done a great job on capacity and, um, making, you know, a silk purse out of a cow's ear, uh, as far as, you know, getting space and things like that. So, um, you know, there's some of these options that I don't really think that we need right now. So if we chose to not do those now, could we have that option to come back in the future and look at that?
For sure, for sure.
We can add to it in the future.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So the recommendation is the enrollment analysis and the boundary analysis that, that we've looked at, or those are what we have, have as a board stated we wanted, uh, recommended as a public facilitation, and then the two items that we spoke with Mr. Lee about capacity and building tours. So can you help us with a number, financial number, on enrollment analysis and boundary analysis? Please.
Yeah, so I think, um, uh, what I listed off on your last page, I think this corresponds with your contract. Um, the enrollment analysis is. The enrollment analysis is 50, and then I think the boundary analysis, I have a range here, is 25 to 55, so I'm not sure as it's written in there. What did we have on there?
It says without public facilitation, it's also a range 25 to 35?
Yeah, so the boundary analysis is 15. Just doing boundary analysis, that's not any meetings, facilitation, or whatnot, just the boundary analysis.
That's 75,000 total, 50 and 15, it might?
Be 65.
Excuse me, 65, thank you. My math is, I'm not a math major. Members of the board, are there other things you'd like to see the public facilitation? That's 55,000?
That'll be dependent on the number of meetings, I think it was, was it 40?
Yes, 40.
Was 40. And that is outlined, like, the same number of meetings, like what we did with Clarksville, Montgomery County.
Thank you.
The public facilitation that you did for Clarksville, Montgomery County, what was the reason for having you guys do that?
I think it was because we were a third unbiased party. It defrayed some of the challenges that come with administration and/or the board they could turn to, here's what the consultant produced through that process and what's being recommended through that process, is probably the big reason.
That was additional?
40,000.
50,000 or?
40,000.
40,000.
40,000.
I see the value in the third party, but it's a, in Clarksville, Montgomery, you said a small response by the community to participate in the meetings, is that correct?
For the final meeting where they adopted it, there was a lot of feedback through the surveys that we had, and through the public input sessions, that allowed the community to provide their thoughts on what they were seeing.
Any other questions or comments concerns members of the board? You see what's before you? We'd like to be able to plan as we have these buildings that we, we've asked the county commission additions to look at, as well as the overcrowding in Stewart's Creek, make this, in Stewart's Creek and in the county overall, so makes this a little bit more urgent, if you will. So be interested to know what others would like to see, we can add on later on, this board can add on later on.
I'm comfortable with what you did for Clarksville, Montgomery, in the enrollment analysis and the boundary analysis, and maybe hold off on the public facilitation. Is there any reason why we couldn't do that ourselves?
We?
I mean, zoning is not an easy time, and I know, we have meetings, and I participated in some meetings, is there something that we, why can't we just do it ourselves?
I'm sure the board could, if the board chose to.
I think that's, I think we could do that.
Okay.
I really, I feel like we've done it in the past, we could take the recommendations from the enrollment analysis and boundary analysis, and we could be, you know, fully transparent, and we could listen to our parents and our students, just as we've done in the past.
So then, you would like to do, just so I understand, enrollment, the enrollment analysis and the boundary analysis?
Yes.
65,000.
Yes, yes.
Initial and contract.
And I do want to bring our findings to the people, let them weigh in on it before we make any decisions.
What kind of timeline are we looking at doing those two options?
I think the key thing is, what is the timeline that you need for potential solutions? Are we looking, I would imagine the earliest would be the '23-'24 school year, is that my correct in that?
23, 24.
22.
Yeah.
22, 23, if possible.
Right.
The new school year.
So for this upcoming school year?
Yes.
All right, we could put things together to do that. The caution, I have to tell you this as a consultant, if you're gonna make changes for this next school year, how much time does your community need to have to accept what those changes would be in this next school year? I would give caution to try to do a change from that aspect, but then the other is, like, listening to some of the stuff with, like, trying to program and staff your buildings, there may be some challenges there.
I think what they're referencing is getting start on the plan in the '22-'23, and kind of, you probably could wrap that up by the end of that school year, which would take that plan into effect for the '23-'24, so I think that's where.
If that's what we're saying, then yes, this is all doing.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about, like, doing it for next year.
No, we need this tomorrow.
The goal is certainly to have a plan, right, to understand the growth. I think we grew 1,800 students in the last year, so our desire to embark on this journey is, we'd like to start immediately.
Okay, perfect.
So we can plan. So, members of the board, Ms. Maxwell, would you like to make a motion to that? Enrollment analysis and boundary analysis?
I move that we hire RSP to do an enrollment analysis and boundary analysis.
Ms. Reed is at a sufficient?
Yes.
Motion? Thank you. We have, first, we have a motion?
Can we, just to revisit, if we need more services?
Sure.
Yes.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I amended my motion to say I would like to accept RSP in doing an enrollment and boundary analysis, and with the option to add more services in the future, if need be.
Sounds good, thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Ms. Hopkins, would you please call the rule?
McCo?
Yes.
Ms. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Entis?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Spurlock.
Insurance update.
Nothing additional at this time. Next up?
All right, directors update. First of all, we want to congratulate all the administrators, teachers, and students for getting through this testing cycle. Everything's been sent off, the tests are on their way. We do want to call your attention to the fact that we anticipate raw scores by May 20th, and a cleanup will have to go through, check, making sure everything's correct, and we have until May 27th to get those in. I'm saying all that's because in policy, it says TCAP and EOC grade conversion from raw scores to quick scores will be the CUE methodology. The director of school may exclude the scores from students' final grades if results are not received by the district at least five instructional days before the end of the course. Now, that test is 15% of their semester's grade, so if we don't get it in time, we would just simply go on, like we've done in the past in policy, and waive that, adding that into their grade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Number 17, Tennessee Legislative Network.
Yes, I have, there's quite a bit here regarding wrapping up the legislative session and funding this year. They approved $1 billion in K-12 funding, $750 million for TISA starting the 2023-2024 school year, $500 million for CTE grants to high schools and middle schools, $125 million for increases to teacher salaries, and TISA did pass with the Senate amendments being added. These include funding that includes a base amount, weights, direct, and outcomes, fiscal capacity remains a mix of CBER and TACIR, fast growth stipend, and the age-appropriate materials, this is an overall summary, we're working on additional details. Each school must maintain a current list of materials in the school library. The board must adopt a policy on reviewing school library collections. This includes ensuring materials are appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the materials and suitable for and consistent with the educational mission of the school. The policy must contain a procedure for the Board of Education to receive and evaluate feedback from a student, parent, or school employee regarding materials in the library collection, a procedure to periodically review the library collection at each school. The Board of Education must evaluate materials for which feedback is provided to determine if it is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the student who may have access to materials and suitable for and consistent with the educational mission of the school. If the materials do not meet the requirement, then they must be removed. And then there's HB 2666 and SB 2247 adds to the law above by implementing the following: Requires the textbook commission to issue grievances for districts to use when reviewing library materials, assist districts in evaluating the appropriateness of the materials in the library collection when feedback is received, and responding to feedback, complaints, or appeals challenges the appropriateness of the materials. The textbook commission will establish a timeline for an appeal for the Board of Education's decision, and the textbook commission may limit the number of times the removal of a particular material can be appealed to the commission, the number of appeals an individual can file with a certain period of time, and the number of materials removed that an individual can appeal one and one time. Textbook commission is required to issue their finding on appeal. If the commission finds the materials inappropriate, they must be removed. That's about it.
Thank you. That's very efficient. How about federal?
There is nothing federal.
Okay, thank you. General discussion, members of the board. I have one item, we will have a special called meeting on May 10th at 6:00 PM directly following the retirement banquet, so please mark your calendars, members of the board. If there is nothing further, I appreciate the sheriffs for being here this evening, appreciate you, the staff, and we are adjourned.